...activity that we participate in once a month. We're so grateful that you're all here today. I'm Mayor Jen Daniels. We have Councilmember Jordan Ray, Councilmember Bridget Peterson, Councilmember Jared Taylor, Councilmember Scott Anderson, Councilmember Eddie Cook is around here somewhere, there he is, and Vice Mayor Peterson. Vice Mayor will be reading the names tonight, and we are just so grateful that you guys are all here. Who's excited that there's only a few more days of school left? And as excited as our students and parents are, where's the teachers? Alright, yes, we're so grateful. Speaking of teachers, well first we'll talk about this month's highlighted pillar is character, highlighted character is caring. I didn't say that right at all. Highlighted pillar of the month is character, is caring. That's kind of how the whole day has been today, so we apologize. We'll get this right. But like many of your schools, the town council also follows those pillars of character. And so this month we are talking about caring in our community. Did anybody participate in Gilbert Kindness Week last week? Anyone? Okay, look for it next year because once a year, oh Jessica did. Next year we're gonna do it again. It was a tremendous week, and you'll have to look on social media to see some of the incredible things that happened in the town of Gilbert during Gilbert Kindness Week. We'd like to thank our sponsors for helping us. We have Sal's Gilbert Pizza across the street, and Sub-Zero Ice Cream who have donated coupons and freebies for you that are in your bag tonight. So, big round of applause for those two great companies. So, teachers, we know that you're ready for summer too, and we wanted to take a minute to recognize you. For all the teachers in the room, will you please stand so we can honor you? And administrators, our principals too. Thank you. So I'm gonna need a helper. You look like a good helper. Will you come help me? Alright, come on. I didn't even prep him for it, this is all, first timer. Tell us your name.
Noah.
Noah. We have the names of all the teachers who submitted a student to Students Citizen of the Month. We also have a $25 Frost Gelato gift card for them that they'll need. We can only pick one teacher. Will you be the one that picks? Okay. It's okay if you don't pick your own teacher. Alright, from Carroll Ray Elementary, Mrs. Voight. Vote! Is Mrs. Voight here? Okay, Mrs. Voight's not here. She's probably grading papers, but we'll make sure she gets it. Thanks for your help, Noah. Alright, that moves us to the actual Students Citizen of the Month awards, which is what you're here for tonight. We do this in three groups, and we do it really efficiently. So the first three groups are the elementary schools that are A through I. So it's Ashland Ranch Elementary all the way through Islands Elementary, that's group one. So if you go to one of those schools and you are nominated for a Student Citizen of the Month award, will you please come up here and see Councilmember Ray? Come on down, don't be shy. Second group is our elementary schools K to Z, and the third group is those junior high and high school students. Parents, we know you came to take a picture of your child getting an award tonight, so we want to make that as easy as possible. Either when the group happens, or when, right before your child gets called, we do it in alphabetical order. Please feel free to come down here to this area, that's the best spot to get the photo, and we'll make sure that we get it for you. Did I miss any? Oh, and Jessica from Gilbert Digital is here. She's gonna take pictures with the good camera as well, and she'll have those all posted on Facebook tonight, and you can grab them off of Facebook or our Flickr account, right? Facebook only. Okay. So that's, I think, all the logistics of tonight. Did we get it all? Alright, they look good, they look like they're ready. Vice Mayor, kick it off.
Oh, is it there now? Okay. Sorry about that. First of all, I'll say this once, if I get your name wrong, don't be shy, let me know. I will do my best. I'll do my best. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Hope Halaire. From Bridges Elementary, Cruz Huerta. From Burke Elementary, Delaney Queen. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Aiden Naus. Did I get that right? I'm getting lucky, nobody with hardened names is here to tell me I got it wrong. From Coronado Elementary, Gabriel Kelly, or Gabriel, sorry, it's Gabriel. I'll do my best on this next one here. Highland Park Elementary, Alize Montez, or Elise? Alize, I got her at the first time.
So if you need to leave, or would like to leave after your child receives their award,
And last from group one, from Islands Elementary, Presley Nonosa.
feel free to do so, and that'll make room for some of the other families too that are standing there. So feel free if you need to go. Group two, come on down, that's all of the rest of our elementary school students. We know that it's a busy night, as the whole month of May feels like it is. So if you need to leave, or would like to leave after your child receives their award, feel free to do so, and that'll make room for some of the other families too that are standing there. So feel free if you need to go. Group two, come on down, that's all of the rest of our elementary school students. Another Leading Edge. Yep, one of these was last month too. That's why there was no note on it that said it was number last month. Oh, that way over there to the, to the right. Yeah, get that side first. Noah was our helper.
Also from Leading Edge Academy, Camia Magette. Neha Sharma. From Oak Tree Elementary, Ryan Savoyk. From Patterson Elementary, Ellie Dotson. Maybe it's L. It's L. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Kirsten Nahera. I just know how to say jalapeno, and that helped me. From Settlers Point Elementary, Mia Frank. Also from Spectrum Elementary, Herbert Michael Lawton. From Valvista Lakes Elementary, Ally Nalola. Might be Noyola. There was Noyola.
Alright, group three is our junior high and high school students, so come on down.
Oh, Layton, I apologize, that was obvious. Also from Gilbert Junior High, Chance Lopez. Also from Greenfield Junior High, Eduardo Roman. From Mosquito Junior High, Abby Pentey. From Mesquite Junior High, Abby Pentey. From Payne Junior High School, Madison Roth. I'm rolling the dice here. From Sossaman Middle School, Aleka Jones. Oh, I got really lucky. Alright. From South Valley Junior High, Raul Valencia Villa III.
That does conclude our Student Citizen of the Month portion of our program tonight, so thank you so much. Our council meeting will begin in just a few minutes. Have a great weekend and a great summer.
At this time, we'd like to invite, I don't think I'm ever going to be able to stop calling you Chief Bryce. So Chief Bryce, come on down. Chief Bryce is also Commander Bryce, and he's been serving as the interim police chief for the town of Gilbert after the retirement of Chief Tim Dorn. And Chief Bryce has done a remarkable job and deserves our deepest gratitude. And so the entire council wanted to make sure we were all down here today to say thank you to you. We have a certificate of appreciation and really heartfelt thanks to you. We're so glad that you're still going to be here. You're probably glad you'll get a little bit more sleep and you'll pass the sleepless nights on to someone else. And so that's good too. But is there anything you wanted to add?
I haven't even been here a year, and this is what happens to you when you come to Gilbert. So, no, this is a wonderful place to work. They opened, I came with no real expectations, but they welcomed me with open arms. This is great council, a great town staff, and I've been proud to be here. Next week will be my official year, so this has been a roller coaster. A lot of fun. I am excited about having a new chief that we'll get to hear about tonight. Some great people coming in this organization, and I think there's a real bright future. So thank you for your leadership and all that you do for us.
And if we could all offer Chief Bryce a nice round of applause. We are going to need to vote on this next agenda item, I think. Maybe we could just do it by acclamation since we're all here on the floor. And at this time, it is our distinct privilege to be able to vote, really, and ratify the contract that's being extended to our new chief, Chief Michael Solberg. And we are really excited for his leadership as well. The reason we're all standing down here is we want to show you visually that we are in support of you. And so at this time, do I have to say something special? It's on my agenda with me. We have a motion by Councilmember Ray and a second by Councilmember Cook. And we are confirming the appointment of Michael Solberg. We look like this is our first time. For the record, this is our first time to do the police chief appointment and confirmation. So effective June 5, 2017. Thank you. Lisa Clark keeps us in line here. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Chief Solberg, if you would please come down, we would love to honor you. If you want to bring your family as well, that'd be great. We love photo ops.
This is my first time as well. So I just want to say thank you to all of council, to the town management, and everyone who put us through this process. It was rigorous, but it was very professional, and it was very well done. I've lived in Gilbert for over 21 years. I've been with the Mesa Police Department for just over 22 years. So it's not a far move for me. I get to stay right in my house. It's just a shorter commute. But working with Mesa for over 22 years has afforded me the opportunity to work with Gilbert over, throughout my career. And Gilbert is an excellent police department, and I'm excited to be here. I'm humbled by the opportunity, and it's home for me. I've seen the town grow from about 60,000 when we moved here to about 250,000, and it's going to keep growing. So we're going to go with the police department with it. So I'm looking forward to leading that change and that progress. It's a great opportunity, and I look forward to working with the community as well. Thank you. Oh, yes. Sorry. I'd like to introduce my wife, Tammy, my son, Cody, and my daughter, Kaitlyn, and my mother-in-law, Becky. She stays in the audience.
We'd invite everyone in council chambers to join us for a 10-minute recess. In the lobby, we have some cake and refreshments and an opportunity for you all to meet our new Chief Solberg. Thank you.
Am I doing it right?
Yeah.
Good.
All right. We are now on the portion of our agenda that's communications from citizens. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we do. We have, hold on a second. We have Joe Guissick for sure, but there's one here that didn't mark an item. So I'm not sure if it's communications from citizens or a specific item. His name is Jim Currie. So if it's on a specific item, we'll just need to know the item. If it's not, then it's now.
Oh, American grubs.
Okay. So it is an item on the agenda. I'll get that number written down here. So we'll have Joe Guissick for three minutes. Joe, you know the drill. Just make sure to state your name and whether or not you're a Gilbert resident for the record.
Yes, my name is Joe Guissick, and I'm a proud Gilbert resident. Mayor Daniels, fellow town council members, all town staff, residents, and guests of our beautiful community. As I said, my name is Joe Guissick, and I'm your lovable, slightly annoying American citizen. I'm your education Lorax. First of all, I want to apologize for not attending the last board meeting. As I was driving here, I decided I needed to go to the Capitol. I spent my time all the way till four in the morning. As I will say to you very distinctly, there's room for improvement. So I'll share with you what I wanted to share with you last time, and I shared in an email to you. I asked you a question. Do you believe in public policy? So let me give you a little definition of these things. Policy: prudence or wisdom in the management of affairs. Management or procedures based primarily on material interests. Let's get to the most important word. Public: concerning the people as a whole. And the key word is "whole." So as I shared with you in that email, and I asked for some of you to reply, and I appreciate those who did. The point is this. Your job doesn't technically have a job description. It has a framework. But I do believe that in our struggles of our country today, that we are failing to lead with distinction and honor by following what's public policy. I realize that each of you have a personal policy. You have an individual policy. You have a religious policy. You have a political policy. But I think as those things come to the table and as you work together for all of us on our behalf, it is very important that you understand that you do it for the whole, not just for yourself, not for those who voted. So I'll share with you, I watched your meeting. I watched all 200 and some odd minutes of it. And there was a very good comment by one of you that talked about smart lean and foolish lean. We always have to be very cognizant of where we're at and where we're going. I believe in totality is where reality sits. When we make these decisions, as you made last time, and I wasn't here, but I'm always appreciative of you always working together and getting something done. But the reality is this. You need to ensure that you understand totality. Because in those questions that you asked today, as I shared previously to you about our state retirement plan, they made a horrific mistake. And there are people paying for it today, and your organization's paying for it today. So I will simply finish with this. Our education system, since 1970, has been funded at 70% of inflation. As you continue to have your conversations about funding at inflation or over inflation, just remember our education system is woefully underfunded. Thank you.
Mayor, that is all for communication from citizens.
Thank you. That moves us to the consent calendar, and I'd like to Vice Mayor Peterson to assist.
Mayor, we only had a couple of items that were requested to be pulled from consent, and they were in numbers five and number 13. And I'll just double-check with the council now to see if there were any others before proceeding. Nope. Okay. With that, Mayor, I will, I do move, I move to approve items 1B, 1C, 2, 3, 4, 6 as revised, 7, 12, and 14.
What about 10?
Oh, did I skip? I'm sorry. Yes, and item 10. I apologize. I add that to my motion.
A second? Thank you. And just for clarifications, items 8, 9, and 11 have been removed from the agenda for tonight's meeting. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote and takes us to agenda item 5.
Mayor, I asked for this item, but I think Councilmember Taylor did too, and I'll let him speak first if he'd like.
Mayor, I was looking for a little bit more direct return on this one. Certainly understand what the issue that they're going after. There's probably just some better ways to do this, so not really looking to support this one tonight.
Just a really short comment. What I'd like to get is more information on who is actually involved in doing this. I think it's good. As I mentioned, when this was brought before us previously, this is, what's happening up in the northern part of our state is fantastic, and this is a good part of that. But I just jotted down a few other organizations that may want to be involved in this, and I'm wondering if they are involved, if we could learn more about people that may be involved in this and what their contribution is. Places like Ducks Unlimited, Game and Fish, Fish and Wildlife, the National Forest, State Forestry, the Nature Conservancy, these are all organizations that would have a vested interest in this, and I'd like to know whether or not they're involved.
We have Eric Braun here.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor and council. The regional forester for the federal forest service is involved with the Northern Arizona Forest Fund. The projects actually are vetted through the forest service and are approved through the forest service, and these are queued up over time. And the National Forest Foundation is the operating agency that contracts for these projects on the federal lands. Some of the private partners that are involved with this particular forest fund, PepsiCo, Crown Distributing, Santian Brewing Company in Chandler as well, and then there are a whole host of public agencies, cities of Glendale, Peoria, Scottsdale, Phoenix as well.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilmember Cook?
Mayor and council, I'm not in favor of this particular agenda item. And obviously, I've been supporting our relationship with AMWA for many years, and I just don't see the true benefit for this. The efforts that they're doing is, in my opinion, fairly insignificant. And when you think about the hundreds of years of forest fires, and how it could have affected our water supply over the 100 years, and the efforts that's been done with this, I just feel like the funds should be more useful in finding an alternative water source from the CAP and so forth. So I would say that the federal government should actually take care of protecting our water here in Arizona, and we should put them actually in charge of that. And they should fund those types of activities instead of asking for the foundation to do that level effort. It's their responsibility to do this, and so I'm not in favor of this particular funding allocation to this organization.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Mayor, I think I'm hearing some of the thoughts that I've had from others, and I appreciate their comments. The funding mechanism here just doesn't make sense to me. I don't doubt the importance of protecting our water supply, but these are federal lands and the SRP watershed. So I think the investment in that, protecting that resource, needs to be done more directly by SRP and/or the federal government. I think we're just too far removed to ever know the effectiveness of such investments, and this mechanism just doesn't make sense to me.
Based on some of the comments from council, I just have a quick question before we vote on this. Jared, you just mentioned that you maybe had some additional questions on top of, and so did you, Councilmember Anderson. So if you have more information, do you think you're inclined to vote in favor of this? Or, and what I'm asking is, should we continue this item, or should we go ahead and vote on this item? Does anything make a difference to your vote?
Mayor, thank you. I'm always willing to learn, and I don't know if it'll totally change my vote. I think we should just vote for tonight, but I'm open to continuing to learn. I don't know if it'll totally change it, though.
Yeah, I was more interested in what the monetary values were and all the other participants. That may help, may not.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote on this agenda item tonight and make some decisions. We will be concise with that. I would urge the council to reach out to Eric. I had a great presentation from Eric, and because of my involvement with CAP and some of the other water decisions that we've been making, I actually am in favor of this. I feel like if we're not willing to assist with this, we're expecting someone else to do it. And that hasn't always played out very well. So I understand and can appreciate the concerns about return on investment and showing monetary return on the contribution. But they're able to utilize these dollars and really leverage them to make substantial improvements to our water source that has great value to our water department and in turn to our utility users and water users in the town of Gilbert. So I see the direct correlation. Of course, I appreciate and respect the opinion of others who do not. So at this time, I will ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve as presented on our agenda.
And I will second that motion. Thank you. Please vote.
Still waiting for one more.
I think we're all lit up here. All right. That motion fails with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. I guess I have to say with a 2-5 vote. Thank you. All right. That moves us to, I believe, agenda item 13 on our consent agenda.
Mayor, Councilmember Ray asks for that item to be pulled.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor. So tonight, we are voting on the final plat, as everyone on the council understands. So really, we're just... So really, we're just approving the easements with this parking lot for Perry High School. I wanted to take this chance, though, to again, reach out to Chandler Unified School District and ask them for a couple of favors. I've had a number of residents who have contacted me. This is an additional parking lot at Perry High School, and they have a tremendous parking problem there, and I realize it needs to be taken care of. The way that this parking lot is designed, it backs up to a few residential homes. And so the residents have reached out to Dr. Castillo, and we've had meetings with him, and they've been very gracious, they being the Chandler School District. But a couple of last-minute favors I'll ask of them, this is not something for us to approve tonight because it's the design, we don't have say over how they designed this being a school. But when they raised, when they built this parking lot, it's essentially done at this point, they raised the ground about three feet. And so before doing so, they agreed to a six-foot fence to separate the neighbors. The problem is, is they built a six-foot fence on the three feet that used to exist, so now it's a three-foot pony wall, essentially is what it is. And so when you park your car, you can look over the fence and into the neighbors. And so I would ask them, again, if they would raise that as part of this. And then also if they'll look at the lights, the way the lights are proposed and designed right now, it will put significant light into the neighbors' yards. And so, again, this is simply an ask of Chandler Unified to look at those lights again and see if there's a different way of putting them up, whether it's a different light, whether it's different angles, et cetera. But that was the extent of it. I'm fine to support this because it's just an easement, it's a plat, but I wanted to use the opportunity to ask Chandler, again, to look at some of those options for those homeowners.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Is there a representative from Chandler Unified here tonight? It's a tough time of the year for our schools, so I can appreciate. Maybe we could task staff with reaching out to Chandler Unified after this meeting, maybe tomorrow, and letting them know that there were some comments made this evening in those, in that vein, and if they could please respond to Councilmember Ray probably directly to confirm. All right, we can call for a vote.
With that, I move to approve the item, Mayor.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That does complete our consent calendar agenda and moves us to a public hearing. All items will be heard at one public hearing, and if you wish to comment on a public hearing item, there are some cards and request to speak cards in the back, and those can be brought to us up front. We have, we have three public hearing items this evening. I'm going to anticipate that Item 16 will probably take the longest out of this, and I know that there's some council comment on 16. Have there been any requests to speak on Item 15?
Mayor, there's one from the public. They're in favor, but they said that they'd like to speak only if necessary. I'm assuming if there's concerns with the item.
On 15?
I have not heard any from council, but we can look and see now if the council had any concerns or questions.
All right, nothing on 15. So I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 15 and close the public hearing on Agenda Item 15 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will move to approve item number 15.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Mayor, I should probably mention for the record, this was Nicholas Gutia, who was in favor of that item.
Thank you. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. I'm going to push pause on 16 and move to Agenda Item 17. How many requests to speak do we have on Agenda Item 17?
Mayor, I've got, let's see, a number who don't want to speak. Let me get them added up here.
Vice Mayor, I'm going to have you sort and organize those and ask staff to come forward and to give us a brief presentation on Agenda Item 17. So I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 17 and ask staff to come forward at this time. And I don't think we've had the privilege of meeting yet. Can you please introduce yourself?
Yes, I will. Mayor, Town Council, good evening. My name is Gilbert Alguín. I'm a planner with the Town of Gilbert. I've been with the town for six months.
Terrific. Thank you. Welcome to council.
Thank you. Would you like me to give a presentation on Item 17?
Yeah, just a brief presentation overview would be terrific. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. Tonight I'll be giving you the, a brief presentation on a general plan and zone change application for American Grove's living facility. So what we have in front of us is a perspective map, kind of give you an idea where it's located. We have Elliott Road to the north of the subject site, and we have Lindsay Road to the west. The property in red is our site. It is three parcels of land. It equals 6.48 acres. It's right here. We have, the request tonight is, as mentioned, two applications for a general plan. It's for 2.2 acres of property from neighborhood office to residential 0-1. And for the zoning application, it's for a total of 6.48 acres. The request is for 2.5 acres of property, which is neighborhood office, to 4.23 acres of property, which is a single-family 15, to be rezoned to single-family 35. So before I move forward on the general plan, land classification exhibit, I wanted to mention that there was some concern in the beginning, so this case has gone to a planning commission twice. And at the, the applicant brought the case twice because there was some concern on public notice. So they felt that it would be important to make sure that any concerns that they had with the public notice, signposting was addressed. And so as you see in your packet, they, there's been an extensive public participation process. They've gone above and beyond what's required by the town code. So in front, we have the general plan exhibit. It shows property to the north that's all residential. We have the high school, which is Gilbert High, which exists over here. PFI is a lone zone, I'm sorry, the general plan, land use classification. To the south is residential, and to the west and a little bit to the north is some more residential and some neighborhood office. On the zoning exhibit, same concept kind of applies. We have a zoning that's residential to the north. We have the high school, which is to the west, and more, I believe it's a Kilo subdivision that exists to the south, and also on this side as well. These are kind of a traditional acre lot, lots that exist here, been around for several years. On zoning, I wanted to mention that one of the items that we look at when we get these types of cases is the impact that the zoning could have on the, on the surrounding neighbors. The property was rezoned back in 2005 to a neighborhood office, and the back portion over four acres was residential. It was going to be for two office complexes, and it never went forward. In 1987 is when this high school, Gilbert High, was created, and I would, I'd mentioned that when an impact is made, this would have made the largest impact with the school and the students that come here. We're asking tonight to rezone this back to residential with the intent to do a congreg care living facility, which we have a TIA that was done on the project, and it shows that currently with what's zoned today, that would bring higher traffic counts than what we're asking for with this rezoning. So it does support less traffic on 29th, which is the property to the west, I should say the street to the west. So staff, the recommended motion is to, to move forward with the, with the resolutions, GP 16-08, and move to make findings of facts and adopt ordinance approving Z 16-14. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Like I said, I have additional slides if you have any questions on the public participation, but staff was very impressed by the efforts that were made by the applicant to address all the concerns and comments that came up. We do have the applicant here tonight if you have any questions for them or myself.
Thank you, Gilbert. Are there any questions from council for our staff?
I think they'd rather hear what the public has to say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, let's move to the public comment, and we'll look to Vice Mayor Peterson.
So Mayor, we have two that are in favor that do not want to speak. For the record, we have, oh my, Sarge Glenn and Richard Norman, who are in favor and don't want to speak. Then we have seven who are against, who do not wish to speak, and that's Nicholas Murray, Leo Price, Carol Price, Dr., oh my, ooh, I'm sorry, cannot say that, but I have it for the record, John Saltzman, Michael McKinney, and Robert Labrum. Now, finally, we have three who do wish to speak and are opposed, and so we'll call them up in this order, and I think we'll do three minutes apiece since there's not too many. Mr. Jim Curry, if you'd come forward, and we'll have David Miller on deck. And just some quick instructions, please start by stating your name and whether or not you're a Gilbert resident. You don't have to tell us your exact address, just whether or not you're a Gilbert resident. And then you'll look to the lights for your cues. A yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. Red light means you're out of time. With that, Jim, thank you, and go ahead.
My name is Jim Curry. I am a resident of Gilbert, and I thank you for letting me speak here real quick. I'm sorry I haven't attended the previous meetings. I've been out of town, and, but I did want to get here and just present my part of this. I guess the first thing I've got in my mind is, I really question the facility and the location. I live almost three-quarters of a mile away from the high school, and I can hear the football games, the crowd cheering, I can hear the band playing, I can hear the band on practice during the week and during the day, and so now you've got a facility where people, it's a nursing facility, I believe, or something like that. It's just hard for me to fathom that it would be a successful venture with that type of noise impacting the resident area. So that's, that's a comment on that end. I built my home in this area here in 1994, and I've seen traffic increase tremendously, especially coming down Cactus Wren, which is the street that I live on. Cactus Wren is used as a shortcut from Warner to Lindsay by whenever there's a traffic jam, or there's an accident, or they're trying to beat the train, they use Cactus Wren to come through there. People have come, there's signs posted at all three entrances into the neighborhood, 25 miles per hour. Vehicles come through there 35, 45, I've seen them come through, I swear, 60 miles per hour, because they're trying to beat the train down to the other end of the road. I've called, I believe it's Officer Martin, numerous times to try and get police officers, because I've got kids, I've got grandkids, and there's animals that are there all the time. And so I feel this is going to have a significant impact on traffic in the area. I don't know that it'll not, not be built, but if it is built, I would urge the council to the Town of Gilbert to please include speed bumps on Cactus Wren, and 31st Street would be another one, which also intersects into Mesquite. But it's the only way to stop traffic racing through the neighborhood. It's already bad, but it's just going to increase dramatically, I feel, with this. So that's, that's really all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Appreciate that.
Next, we have David Miller, and on deck we'll have Catherine Lan.
Good evening. My name's David Miller. I'm a resident of the city of Gilbert, and I come legally representing some additional residents of the city of Gilbert. I've prepared some material. Do you mind if I drop it off for the council members?
That will also be entered into the public record, so thank you.
So as you know, there's been a lot of community response to this in opposition to this development for the obvious reasons that it doesn't really fit the character either of Gilbert or of this particular neighborhood. And residents of this neighborhood, including myself, feel that it would detract in many ways from the quality of life that we enjoy in this particular corner of Gilbert. You've probably heard those concerns. You'll hear, it sounds like tonight you'll also hear these concerns from other people, so I don't want to dwell too much on that, other than mentioning that the traffic issue is very significant, and we're going to kind of come back to that. But I've spoken extensively with Don Cobberstein, the principal of the elementary school right there on the corner of 29th and Mesquite, and she's expressed some serious concerns that this is going to exacerbate an already problematic traffic situation, causing additional issues and additional burdens, both for the students of her elementary school, the parents bringing those, as well as just the general neighbors, members of the community that live in that vicinity. In addition to these very legitimate concerns regarding traffic, there's this unreconciled issue of the deed restrictions in Kalo Park. Kalo Park is the subdivision, you can actually see it right here, it's all of the yellow to the left and south of this proposed site. And these deed restrictions actually prohibit putting anything other than single-family residential, and there's some additional deed restrictions that I've supplied in the little memo that I've drafted, and I've also provided the original documents that have been properly recorded with Maricopa County. These deed restrictions are highly enforceable, and in fact, the case law on this is quite to the point that if this proceeds and if there is neighborhood opposition from the Kalo Park community, that they will be unable to build this in light of opposition from the subdivision. And I mention this, why do I mention this? City of Gilbert wouldn't be dragged into any litigation that occurs as a result of this. However, this property, if it does go to this stage of protracted litigation, this property will sit vacant for even longer. This property will sit undeveloped for even longer, and the ISO that currently exists is going to continue to exist most likely for quite a few more years while this is being resolved. It looks like my, my light is turning yellow, so I'd like to just throw in a couple different things. The current zoning in light of the deed restrictions could never be executed. The neighborhood office could not be put there in light of the deed restrictions. The very small lots could never be put there in light of the deed restrictions. It's the same thing with the, with the traffic study that was done based on the current zoning. Well, the current zoning could never be executed under the, because of the deed restrictions, under the deed restrictions, there would never be more than six houses here with an extremely low traffic impact. And so I think it's quite inappropriate and premature for this to be before the city council and the mayor, and I recommend that rather than accepting these proposed changes, that you either reject them or you take it into advisement until such time that the developer will be willing to negotiate with the subdivision committee that's currently being formed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Catherine, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, everybody. Honorable counsel, Mayor Jennings, Daniels. I live on that street, right behind where that development's going to be. In 2005, I was here with the Gilbert Horse Owners Association, petitioning the council against Mr. Mortensen turning that first two acres on Elliott Road into a commercial property. I moved down here from Fountain Hills with my horses onto two and a half irrigatable horse property acres, with the understanding that Kalo Park CCNRs would prevent this sort of thing. Had we really recognized that back in 2005, I don't believe that this commercial zoning would have happened then. However, this organization that I understand has petitioned, and by the way, every notice I've gotten has been less than 24-hour notice for some sort of a meeting. So usually when you're given a notice in your mailbox and you find out it's happening that night, very often you have other plans, you can't make it to the meeting. So I apologize, this is the first meeting I've been able to get to on this, but from what I understand, they're talking about 160 to 180 residents in that acreage right there. Currently, the zoning is for one acre, single-family homes. So theoretically, I could take my two and a half acres and divide it and build another house on the back end, but this is not part of the overlay. So I encourage you to take this into consideration. Think about a petition of this kind being moved into your neighborhood, how you would respond to that, understanding that the overlay package isn't what I purchased when I first got here, and... And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Did we have any additional requests to speak on this item?
Mayor, those were the, all the requests.
Okay. At this time, we will, if the applicant wishes to speak on this item? Not now. Okay. I have a couple questions, I think, for staff at this point. Based on some of the information, I would imagine that this is not new information to staff. Have you already received copies of this previous to tonight?
Mayor, yes.
Okay. And is there anything that the town would be involved in as it relates to deed or deed restrictions?
Mayor, the, our town attorney could address you on those questions.
Nancy, Chris, good assist.
Mayor Daniels in council. The deed restrictions that the gentleman's referring to are the CCNRs that were from 1971. And the CCNRs are clear, they say, that if anything in the CCNRs, which is standard in CCNRs, conflicts with anything in the document, that the regulations, state laws, city ordinances, town ordinances will prevail, which is standard. If the town had to always check what all the CCNRs say before they adopt ordinances, it would be a very complicated process. But also, the rezoning occurred in 2005, from the rezoning to neighborhood office. And there, I mean, if there was a time to protest the rezoning, it should have been at that time. I'm not aware that, you know, what occurred at that time, but, and then, let's see. So yeah.
Thank you very much for that input. Thank you. Any other questions for, yes, council member Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Would you mind touching on any traffic study, or addressing some of the concerns that were raised relative to traffic?
Counsel, so what we have in front of us is the portion of the TIA that was done on this, on the property, with the conclusions and the recommendations. And it just basically reiterates what staff said earlier, that current zoning would produce more traffic on the site than this proposed use to Carri Care. I also wanted to show you this image here. At the very bottom in the blue, it's not working, but at the blue, there's a, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a yellow line. We have a CIP project that is going to add a sidewalk to that portion of Mesquite. One of the gentlemen that spoke tonight, he lives off of Mesquite, so the town has no desire that we're aware of to do any improvements to 29th Place. But the traffic study, as mentioned before, it basically talks about the impacts, and rezoning this property is going to bring us less traffic than what could occur. And the company that did the study was CivTech. I believe, do we have any internet? Do we have our internet here? No? Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
No? Any other questions, counsel?
Thank you very much. I believe now we kick it to us for additional discussion.
So Mayor Daniels, I'd love to go first, since this really technically kind of is my neighborhood. Every map that you've put up, I could see my lot. So I live right across the street from Gilbert High School. I know lots of people have heard me say that over the years. And I had a lot of concerns with this property. I have attended the planning commission meetings. Last month, I had to leave, or this month, earlier this month, I had to leave a little early, but I went home and I watched it later online, so that I could see what the planning commission discussed. And I've also been in contact with the owners, because I had a lot of concerns about living across the high school, the same things that Mr. Carri talked about. I deal with the traffic in my neighborhood from the high school. I can hear the announcements on a daily basis from the high school, especially in the nice weather, and we have our doors and windows open. I can hear people being called to the office. I can hear the band practicing all hours of the day and night, depending on, you know, what they're up to. The lights are on. I've lived there since 19, yeah, since 1996. Yeah, wow. I was like, wow, that's a long time. So, I know, it kind of just hit me. 1996, we've been saying 2000 for so long, it was like, oh, 1996. So I've lived through all of that, and I can appreciate the fact that you talk about going down 29th Street and Cactus Wren, because I had very good friends that lived on Pandora in your neighborhood, so I was constantly going through, and I still do use occasionally as a shortcut to get back to my house. The things that I asked the owners about were special soundproofing for the building, because of the people that will be living in it next to the high school. And they told me that they are working very closely with the high school. They also told me for the traffic, that they're doing a right-out-only for, to exit their property onto 29th Place. They also changed it from more than one ingress egress on 29th Place to just one ingress egress with the right turn only. I also asked them about their shift changes, because the traffic on Elliott Road, when Gilbert High School starts and ends for the day, is crazy. If I have a 7:30 meeting to be at, or 8 o'clock, it's tough for me to get out of my neighborhood. So I asked them to be cognizant of what time their shifts will be changing with their traffic. I also suggested that they put no parking signs on their property, because of what we deal with, living across the street from the high school. So anything that was talked about at the planning commission meetings, I think I reiterated with them and brought up different items, because of the fact that I live so close and have such great experience with the area. And I think they've covered all their bases. And also recently, one of the things that I heard at the planning commission from residents was, they were afraid about hearing sirens from fire and police and ambulances having to respond. And I happened to go on a ride along with Gilbert Fire about a month and a half ago, and we did two calls to another care facility very similar to this one. We never rolled with lights and sirens on. We stopped at red lights. It was completely quiet. I didn't realize it till all of a sudden, I saw traffic passing us when we were stopped, and I said, hey, we're stopped. And they said, oh, yeah, we don't run with lights and sirens, there's no need to. So I don't think that the neighbors will be bothered by any of that either. So, planning commission talked about this quite a bit. They flushed out all of their concerns, and I know that the neighbors are going to have concerns still, but I was on the planning commission in 2005. I think this is a much better option for you than the office park would have been, and I think that they'll be a very good neighbor for you.
Thank you. Other council comments? Council member Anderson.
And I had an opportunity to talk with David a little bit about this case, and I expressed to him that in my 30 or so years as a professional planner, I could hardly think of better and more compatible land use, when you take into consideration that we are now seeing something happening in Gilbert, where this part of Gilbert, we're having a lot of vacant parcels, where we're now infilling. And what great use this can be as we infill, where we take care of citizens that do need this kind of care. I happen to live across the street from the existing facility that's at Lindsay and Guadalupe. And what a great neighbor they have been for the past several years. And that was an example of a piece of property that was vacant, vacant for many years. When we moved here in 1988, it was vacant, and it stayed vacant for so many years. And now those parcels are beginning to infill, and I can't think of a better land use that would be compatible and quiet, adjacent to residential areas, than a use such as this. And I think we need to remember that, as the community continues to develop. And as far as the traffic that's generated, I hear the comments about Cactus Wren, and that could be a separate issue to talk with traffic engineering and our public works department about traffic on Cactus Wren. But to tie that to this case is probably not appropriate, but that's something we can discuss at a future time. So I think it's an excellent use of a vacant parcel that's been vacant for a long time, and look forward to seeing it develop, and develop with something that's going to add to the community.
Thank you. If there aren't any additional comments from council, I'll just add mine. I did have a chance to meet with David Miller, and I appreciate your proactive nature in addressing us. When you brought it to me, I hadn't even heard about it yet, so that was a great introduction, and I really appreciated it. I especially appreciated the conversation that we had about making sure kids are safe to and from school. And I'm grateful to tell you that, based on that conversation that you and I had, I do think that while the sidewalk project on Mesquite was already moving forward, I think we were able to accelerate that a little bit to assist. I would like to ask staff if they could please work with Mr. Curry and others on Cactus Wren, because it does sound as though there are some safety concerns along that street, high speeds of traffic, and making sure that both animals and residents and visitors are safe there. I am supportive of this project. Interestingly enough, I'll never forget, Dawn Skowson, former council member for the town of Gilbert, told me that in 1987, I guess they made the decision in 1984, but in 1987, when Gilbert High School was built, people were up in arms that it was so far out of town. It's so hard for us to think about that, being so far out of town, since it's really so central to everything. And it's interesting to me that this piece of property, and the desirability of this property, has basically kept it vacant for as many decades as it has. Council member Anderson referenced some of the infill pieces that we see being developed all across town. And I think we have, as a council, supported those infill projects, because they've added tremendous benefit to the community. We do have a number of aging residents, and we also have family members who are coming to live closer to their children and grandchildren in the community. And we, of course, expect all residents to adhere to our traffic and our traffic standards. And that includes on Cactus Wren and 29th. So I do hope that we can make some adjustments and create some solutions that will alleviate that problem on that street. So with that, I will close the public hearing on this agenda item and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 17 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you very much. We now move to agenda item 16. This is our sign code. This is probably a pretty heavy lift for us all. It's a long time coming. And so I will open the public hearing on agenda item 16, and ask staff for a very brief proposal, presentation, sorry, on this. Catherine, thank you for being here. It's my understanding that at least one council member has quite a few questions, changes, and suggestions to the sign code. I actually anticipate that we may be continuing this item, in order to make sure that we address all of those items. But at this point, we'll look to Catherine for a presentation, and then we'll move from
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Catherine Lorbeer. I'm the principal planner with Development Services. You may recall that this item was initiated back in August of 2016, and our focus has been to revise the entire sign code, so that it's consistent with the Supreme Court's decision, and to remove any content-based regulation. We took the draft to the stakeholders in January, and on tonight's agenda, this is the public hearing item. Our broad goal was to remove any content-based regulation, but we also wanted to hear feedback from the community. So we did have several stakeholder workshops in January, and two in February. And just, there's a brief list there of some of the folks who did participate. It was extensive, especially the last five months. And we got input from, you know, at the meeting, via telephone, email. I had in-person meetings with folks. You know, you did receive a letter yesterday from the chamber expressing their support. And I also had a phone call today with the Realtors Association, just to express their appreciation that the revisions that we made kept the code as consistent with the existing code as much as possible. I'll just skip to a couple highlights. Since you had the draft in December, I just wanted to point out a few items that are different from the draft that you saw in December. We did add a table called Temporary Residential Subdivision Signs. This was in response to the Home Builders Association. Again, they asked us to keep as much of the old code as possible, so we made an attempt to prepare a table, so it would be comparable. And these are the signs that you would see in single-family residential zoning districts for each builder in a recorded subdivision, only in conjunction with them having a model home. We also had a citizen ask that we limit the number of flags on a flag, that we remove the limit on the number of flags on a flag for residential use. So we did make that change. We also have some new graphics, one for size, sign size, and one for sign height. You'll also see in the table for temporary signs, that there is an additional footnote. This is for six off-site signs in single-family residential zoning districts. Again, we heard some feedback from the real estate community. They have very unique needs related to residential property. So again, we took the provisions that were in the existing code and came up with some language to add that footnote. And also, we had feedback from the International Sign Association and the Arizona Sign Association about how much of a freestanding freeway sign could be electronic. So we did, you will see in the draft ordinance, that we did change that per their recommendation to 75 percent, or that would equal about 375 square feet. So I'll stop there, and certainly field any questions that you may have. And just to finally say that the planning commission did recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. And I know that this has been a heavy lift and a lot of work, so I know everyone's anxious to get it completed and voted on. No one probably more anxious than me either, so I definitely appreciate it. I just understand that there's a few comments, and I look to council member Cook for assistance on that.
Well, maybe we should let the public speak, because, I mean, for me, I'm going to recommend that we postpone or extend this for a month and so forth, but that's just me. I mean, I have about 29 pages of items that I would love to review with staff, you know, over the next month. And I know there's no real, you know, timeframe or urgency, so I think we can still move at this slow pace that we've been going, and just to make sure that we do this right. So, I mean, that's going to be my recommendation.
Just a quick note, that slow pace is not the preference of Gilbert government, but we want to make sure that we do it right, and I think that's critical.
But I do have, I do have a question, because I, as you know, I love show and tell. So at the Cook House, we have this little, I don't know what you'd call it, maybe like a little flag, or a little, here, I'll turn it around like this. So at the Cook House, we have this little kind of, you know, sign or banner, and I think it's kind of beautiful. It's got a sunflower on it, and...
Does your wife know you took that?
I did ask permission. You know, and it has the word welcome on it. You know, we put it by the front of our house. It makes it look beautiful and so forth. And then, you know, what's nice about this sign, you can actually take this off and add other ones. Like, this one says, thankful for grandkids, since we have two grandkids. Well, and then I have ones for like, you know, birthday, happy birthday, and...
Do you have a booth at the farmer's market we should be visiting?
You know. See, here's the birthday one, right here, so. I mean, and in the month of June, we have three birthdays at the Cook House. Well, I was trying to read the sign code, and I couldn't figure out, well, how long can I have this in front of my house? Because I saw something like three days for temporary signage and residential. And I think I might be in trouble if it's three days. So can you just clarify, how many days can I have this beautiful, welcome to the Cook House in front of my house? Am I violating, Kathleen?
Thank you, mayor and council member Cook. That sign would be considered a temporary sign. There is no duration limitation on... There is no duration limitation on how long it can be there. The three days refers to that if it was some event. Like, let's say you had it up for sale and the house sold, we would ask that you take the sign down after three days.
And I was trying to figure that out in the code because it wasn't clear that, to me, that it was an event per se or temporary type of signage. So that's kind of some of the questions I have in the document. It wasn't overly clear. So that's why I'm asking for the extension.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much. We do have a request to speak. I think it's Jim. Jim, do you want to speak tonight, or do you want to wait a month when we have the real vote?
We'll start.
Okay. Then I look to Vice Mayor Peterson.
Jim, please state your name, whether or not you are a Gilbert resident for the record, and you'll get three minutes and 30 seconds. It will be a yellow light, and red means you're done. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, I'm Jim Torgeson. I'm a Gilbert resident, and, you know, I'm going to consider myself colorblind here regardless of the time, but I'll try and pipe myself down because I have a whole lot of things that I noticed. I sat on the Stakeholders Committee this time. I sat on the Stakeholders Committee last time. I own a sign company. Last time, for instance, there was supposedly only going to be 150 feet between monument signs for businesses. Somehow that wasn't adopted. The law, the proposed change that's not listed, was not listed up here is not clear. I would say the 600 feet that it was initially, that is two football fields. 150 feet is 50 yards. I mean, that's still a substantial distance. I think that we really need to sit down and literally pace it off so you understand the distances that are being proposed. In the meeting, I was, I asked directly about the flags, which is shown up there because if somebody wanted to put an Arizona flag, a United States flag, and a POW flag, they would have been in violation. Now, I had to be a little cantankerous, and it was taken down. But I thought to myself, why is it that we want to regulate that? And we hear highest best use or highest best practices. And I propose that, since it's been two years since we've actually had a sign code in place, that maybe instead of looking for other people's best practices, we set the bar for everybody, and we really dig down deep in this. Because we've got a great town. There's, we have much less to complain about than Tempe, but we can do better, and we can consistently do better. And over the next month, we can do better. I noticed several dozen things in this that were not exactly what we spoke about. There are conflicts between 4.407A and number two, 3, and C is discretionary because of how we've made our order of good taste un-elective. G, well, I guess we're not going to have United Nations downtown because they can't have the flag polls. There are a lot of things here that I think we really need to go through and decide why are we regulating that? Does it really have a purpose? We don't want to live in anarchy, obviously, but there are things there that just, they light me up. Last time, we were supposed to, Councilman Cook, there's the legendary inflatable gorilla. Where is that? We thought that was adopted. It's still not reflected here. There's a lot of things where it starts talking about three square feet, and I challenge any one of you to look at a three-square-foot sign and tell me that's appropriate for a business. There's a lot of things, I don't even want to get to all of this that I noticed. I want it, I want you, as the leaders of this town, to lead by telling staff what to do. You know what? That's close enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Based on all of that and based on the request from Councilmember Cook to continue this for a month, is there a motion to continue with date certain? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment. We need a forum, and we could start talking tonight, but we do need some time for some discussion as a council on some of the specific items. I really think it would be best if we had a study session where we had time, a good, a significant amount of time dedicated toward that discussion because I think with something this sweeping, each of us are going to have specific items we want to address. And so far, I have quite a list myself. And so, you know, if all of us did that tonight, we'd be here very, very late, and so this may not be the time, but I do think...
I think we have two different options then. Thanks, Vice Mayor Peterson. I'm not opposed to that at all, but I think we have two different options. One, we can create a subcommittee of the council and have three members of the council work directly with staff to make sure all of the interests from council are being represented through dialogue with staff. So we can do it that way. That might be slightly more efficient for us than doing it in a study session. We don't have any study sessions, I don't believe, scheduled between now and June 15th, which is the month forward date certain that we probably continue this to. And so I'm just checking the temperature of council. Are you in favor of a subcommittee of the council working feverishly for the next four weeks to make that happen, or would you like to have a study session?
Mayor, I would volunteer to be on that.
Terrific.
If I can be, I'm in favor of it. How's that?
Vice Mayor Peterson, Councilmember Cook, and Councilmember Anderson. Three of you representing us on a subcommittee of the council in order to work with staff. All right. Do we need to have a formal motion to create that subcommittee of the council? This is our first one for a while. Yes, I believe you do. Let me just... Okay. And like doing that, we can continue this item without, right now, and wait on that response, so...
I would...
We actually have to continue it to date certain any time you continue an item. So I would recommend June 15th, June 29th at the latest. June 15th is a really heavy council meeting. That's a budget. Can we do June 29th? Is everybody okay with that, staff? Okay.
So Mayor, I move that we continue this Agenda Item 16 to June 29th.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second by Vice Mayor Peterson, and all in favor, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, so we will continue sign code. And you have a response? Yes?
Mayor, you can direct or move to, to direct staff to create a subcommittee and list the council members that have volunteered.
Terrific. And I think we've just done that, so you have that information, and I would just urge everybody to make the dates available in order to make sure you work there. It's probably going to take at least a couple meetings, I would imagine, to get through all that. So thank you, and thank you for volunteering. That's very helpful for the rest of us. All right. That can, completes the public hearing. Oh, and I didn't close the public hearing, but you can pretend like I did. That completes the public hearing of our meeting and moves us to administrative items. We have one, a couple administrative items, so we have item 18. Any comments or questions from council on the budget report? All right. A motion to accept that?
I move to approve item 18.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. 7-0 vote. Thank you very much. Item 19 has been removed from the agenda. Any boards, commissions, and committee reports from council?
Mayor, I just realized sitting here, or earlier today, and I just emailed Jacob out who's helping me with this, but we had asked to follow up on looking at the bylaws for all of our boards and commissions, and we all kind of have maybe forgotten about that, so I just asked Jacob to follow up with that, and he's going to take the lead on that for me.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Any other? All right. That moves us to future meetings. Any requests for future meetings? I saw that there were dates for all of this list. Seems like we're going to be busy from now until at least October, November, December, which is great. Terrific. Thank you. Communications, a report from the Town Manager on current events. I have to apologize to our Town Manager. I don't do this very often, at least publicly, but he was supposed to introduce Chief Solberg tonight, so I apologize for stealing his thunder. It's a great hire, so I can imagine that he wanted to wave that flag, but I turned to the Town Manager on current events.
Mayor, thank you. I'm sorry, like a gift to Ruth Chris Steakhouse, just in case you were wondering.
Really noted. Thanks.
Mayor, members of council, nothing tonight. Thank you.
And your report from council on current events. Councilmember Ray.
So I just wanted to say congratulations or thank you to Rod Buchanan and his staff. We just finished the Gilbert Little League baseball season. The Gators, who were in the seven-to-nine-year-old coach pitch, gave it their best effort most games, but we had tremendous... I had the chance to coach a team, and it was great working with the town. Tyler Smith did an excellent job, and I've spent a lot of years playing and coaching baseball, and I'm not sure there's a better-run league than this one. And to McQueen Park is an excellent facility. I played in a lot of fields too, and there's nothing that I've ever played on tonight other than McQueen Park. So to Rod and his maintenance team, please don't lose those guys because it's an excellent facility, and the entire season was, was great. So thank you for all your efforts.
You know, that's on the West Side. Understand that.
I didn't want to mention that, but...
All right. We don't want to get into that tonight. Vice Mayor Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to announce that Forest City Gilbert's very excited to say that we've passed our minimum sponsorship threshold, and so we are 100% go, pretty much guaranteed to more than cover the cost of the event and raise some money for charity. Excited about that. It is not too late, too late to sponsor, though. You can go to our site, irunforgood.org. You can also register to run there, and there are flyers for both purposes to share with your friends as well. We have a Facebook page, Forest City Gilbert. Please like us there. You can join the event that was posted as well. And so we just want to keep everyone in the loop on that. Very excited. We're grateful to the collaborations that have already happened. We've got Gilbert High School, Highland High School, or sorry, Mesquite High School officially are on board with participating as well. So, and we've got other schools we're working with now, too. Hopefully, we'll get them also involved. So great opportunity to raise awareness and raise funds to prevent and treat youth substance abuse. So just invite everyone to be involved. October 28th is the date of the event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, just a real quick congratulations to the class of 2017. We have a lot of graduates coming up across the premier education that we have in Gilbert, so we're looking forward to them and for them to be safe on graduation night.
You bet. I attended a graduation this morning for one of our high schools, local high schools, and it was a great group, and there probably wasn't a dry eye in the place, so good, good kids graduated from high school. We're proud of them, all of them. Councilmember Anderson.
As a matter of fact, today also, I attended a special celebration at EduPrize School. They got an A-plus rating. I guess they're one of the few charter schools to get that rating, and they had a great celebration this morning that I was able to attend to.
Terrific. Thanks for that update. And I have no data on current events. We've already had that tonight, so I will reset the regular meeting. We will reconvene in an executive session. The council has two additional executive session items this evening. So thank you all for attending, and have a great weekend.